Like welcome everybody to the June 27th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time prayer be given by Pastor Robert Johnson.
Thank you Mayor and the Board for this opportunity to offer the opening prayer for this section. Let us pray. Spirit of the living God, one that always looking down upon your children, watching over us 24/7, meeting all of our needs, being on time by waking us up each day to face another And we just thank you who you are and the God that you have been to us from the beginning of our journey to this very present moment. And we realize that without you, we can't do nothing. But with you living on the inside, ordering our steps, guiding us in our decisions, we know that we have the right person on our side. So dear God, as we come to this important meeting tonight, we become with concerns, we come with decisions, but we also come, dear God, out of a moment of celebration. We thank you, dear God, for the committee that met to seek out a candidate for the New Bern Housing Authority. And in their search, you allow them to be blessed with a discerning spirit in bringing to us the right candidate. And we just want to thank you for bringing to us Sister Askew. Thank you, dear God, for what she brings to us. And we welcome her with open hearts and with open arms as she come to lead us in making ours a community a better city through and by the Housing Authority Commission. So Lord, help us to embrace her, to welcome her, and to stand with her, and to be a listener and to be support to her. And we thank you for this Board, for what they are doing to make her new transition possible and a blessing. Bless all the other general items that we will be dealt with today. We just depend upon you to lead us and guide us in our deliberation. And that when we leave here tonight, we will leave here with a satisfied mind and a more willing heart to continue to work together to make our city a blessed historic city as you have ordered us to do. In the precious name of Jesus the Christ, our Savior, we offer this prayer and the Redeemer of the Lord say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Robert.
Chairman, the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt, first would you call the Board?
Alderman Beagle.
Here.
Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, this time we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries. At this time, we have a very, very wonderful opportunity here to spend some time with each other. And I'm going to turn this over to Alderman Serena Finkel. I do want to thank, as Robert Johnson said, there's been a lot of hard work done in the last several months, seeking and searching for the right candidate to lead our housing in New Bern. And I think that has been accomplished, and I can't thank the Housing Authority enough, the members, and certainly we're going to be welcoming the new director here in just a minute.
Want to give me my papers back?
Okay. I mean, this is yours.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Outlaw, members of the Board. It's really a wonderful opportunity tonight. The City of New Bern would like to recognize and welcome Ms. Tiffany Askew as the new Executive Director of the New Bern Housing Authority. But before we officially welcome Ms. Askew, we would like to thank interim Director Theresa Lee. And I know she's out here somewhere. There she is. We'd like to, my dear Sister Theresa Lee, for her willingness to step into this leadership role as the search began for a permanent director. Her years of experience in housing in our city, our state and region was the right fit to lead this organization, and we are very grateful for her commitment and her passion. Again, thank you Theresa for your continued service to our city. Thank you so much. Housing has become a focus for this Board of Aldermen, and we look to strengthen our partnership with the Housing Authority with Ms. Askew's arrival to New Bern. Ms. Askew has worked in public housing for over 20 years, and most recently served as the Director of Lease Housing at Spartanburg Housing in Spartanburg, South Carolina. She began her career at the Northwest Georgia Housing Authority in Rome, Georgia, and the Fulton County Housing Authority in Atlanta, Georgia. Ms. Askew is passionate about providing livable, safe, and affordable housing options here in New Bern. She holds a Bachelor of Social Work from Fort Valley State University, a Master's of Leadership from Shorter University, and numerous certifications regarding affordable housing and property management certifications. She sees her role as a caretaker for both the buildings and the people who live there. Her goal is to make a connection with the residents and the families to ensure they have the housing and the resources they need to be productive in the community. Her mission here in New Bern will include resolving damage caused by Hurricane Florence floodwaters by creating new opportunities for new housing stock. Previously, she led a relocation team to support the safe move of over 300 families in Spartanburg. It was their first RAD, better known as the Rental Assistant Demonstration. And I really want to thank her for taking time to meet with myself and the Mayor last week. We had a great, and Theresa Lee, we had a great conversation. I am now more confident than ever that we have a bright future for housing in this community. I believe there'll be a new wonderful partnership, not only with her Board, but with all of us that sit here tonight. And I'm beyond thrilled to have her in our city. So, members of this Board, our city staff, and those citizens here tonight, please help me welcome Ms. Tiffany Askew.
Thank you all so much for that wonderful introduction and for this reception for me. I really appreciate it, and I'm so excited to be here and to be a part of this community and to do what's best for our families, the people that we serve, who are the most important aspect of housing. Housing brings life. Housing brings us more than just a place to sleep. It gives us opportunities to be productive city citizens. So with that being said, I'm here to make sure that we have the best housing in North Carolina and in this country. So, we're going to do that together as a team, and I look forward to this great, great opportunity to do great things here. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Don't go away. And Ms. Lee, you come up too?
You've always been an official New Burnian, but Mayor's going to pay you a little bit more, so.
Go ahead.
Well, again, welcome, and we certainly enjoyed our conversation, and all of us working as a team. And as we discussed, the City of New Bern is there, and we're a major partner, and we've already done that with Theresa last year and so forth. So at this time, we would like to give you our official pen, a pen. And I want to say something very special at this time. I want to recognize somebody that was Chair of the Housing Authority, 32 years, I believe, if I'm correct, Ethel Sampson. Ethel is with us. And I mean, Ethel, I saw you Saturday, and I just didn't get a chance to talk to you. It's really good to see you out.
Proven her personal.
I had to see you tonight. So again, that's the type of folks who get in here and do the work for the betterment of all of our citizens, and we give a welcome to New Bern.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we recess for a brief reception.
Second. Motion and second is there discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. We are at recess. We're going to get back to normal here, and at this time, we're going to go to item number six.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. The next item is to consider adopting fiscal year 2021 final budget ordinance amendment. Revisions have been made to this, and an updated copy has been provided for you this evening. Final budget ordinance is adopted annually to revise the current year's budget to ensure that all projected expenditures have sufficient budget and to realign the revenues to equal the appropriations. Notably for this year on this, we've got the FY 2122, the Employee Benefits Fund recognizes a transfer of $100,000 to the OPEB fund. The Grants Fund acknowledges grants rolled from FY 1920 in the amount of $749,438, and establishes a budget for the NC Office of Archives and History grant of $25,000 to support the New Bern Preservation Foundation's King Solomon Lodge project. And there's also a transfer from the General Fund to the City Hall Building Fund in the amount of $115,500. We have Kim Ostrom here to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Does the Board have questions?
So, pretty much, this is just balancing out, do we zero out the accounts and we start fresh, or is it just, you know, I should know this, but I don't?
So we'll have Kim come up and answer that question.
So this budget was to align our budget with what we project to be, where we project to be at the end of the year. And then the balance to that, we've budgeted for fund balance appropriation. So, yes, next year, you've already approved the fiscal year 22 budget. So in that sense, the operating budgets for General Fund, Water, Sewer, and Electric, those have already been approved. And then whatever's remaining, just pretty much goes to the, it goes to the fund balance.
Okay, so anything that we didn't spend in line items that we don't anticipate, because you still have, you'll have bills coming in July that will be paid in June, so you still have to make adjustments.
So we'll still have to pay those. We've tried our best to project those costs here. So we have open purchase order, or we have purchase orders right now that were, you know, that encumber those expenses. So we were able to review the expenses to date, the encumbrances, and then have a little bit of a cushion for some unexpected expenses. And then the balance to that was then reduced or increased based on what the need was.
So do we have a fund balance, projection monies that went into the fund balance that we would have this year?
So I don't have that with me, but I know that we have the $1,089, I think it was. Sorry, let me look.
It's like General Fund of $1,061.
The $1,064,000 is going to appropriate a fund balance. And this is from the original budget, and then any other small amendments that we had throughout the year, so that revised budget, and then this would be the final budget at this time.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2020-21 final budget ordinance amendment.
Second. Motion and second is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Harris.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries item number seven.
Next item, Mayor, is to consider an ordinance amending the Entitlement Cities Community Development Block Grant Fund. We have been an entitlement city since 2013, and this year our allotment is $264,866. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Mayor, we don't have any questions. I'd like to adopt an ordinance amending the entitlement Cities Community Development Block Grant CDBG Fund.
Second. Second. Motion and second is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries item number eight.
Next item, Mayor, is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with Promise Place for 408 Hancock Street. This item was tabled from the June 8th meeting to allow Alderwoman Harris an opportunity to confirm Promise Place's desire to renew the lease. A letter from the Promise Place is attached seeking renewal. The subject property is the site of the old Fireman's Museum, and the term of the lease is for a period of one year at a rate of $1 per year. In your packet, there is a letter from the Promise Place. They're basically wanting to use the facility for a warehouse to help distribute some of their items. I will say that we have received requests from other groups to also use that facility for meeting space.
Has there been any interest for that place to be sold? Anybody interested in buying it? Have you had any?
Since I've been doing this, I'm not aware of any reason.
I thought the issue was that we couldn't really sell it because of the parking.
Yeah, that's always been the supposed issue.
We can, you know, it'll be under the parking lot.
I agree. I agree.
So when you mention a meeting place, are the ones that's been renting it, are they still able to use it for that use?
No, currently, the Promise Place has lease on the entire facility, so they have the entire building in use for storage. Before that lease was in effect, several groups would use the building, classes would be offered and things like that in 408 Hancock.
I think I would really like to see that continue. I know when Alderman Kinsey brought us the issue of Promise Place, you know, they were actually, you know, physically distributing furniture and other things to the community, and that's what the purpose of it was. You know, at that point, I don't even think they needed a year. They asked us for several months. We said, "Let's do it for a year," and we did that. But based on what I'm seeing in the building now, it's nothing more than boxes with storage stuff in it that really is just a little bit of everything. And I know that the African-American Cultural Center has requested use of that space, at least to rent it for functions and meetings and things like that. And I feel that if we let one nonprofit have it for storage, then why are we not offering it to any other nonprofit? I think in fairness, we should just leave it as a rental unit if somebody wants to come, or, you know, however we decide to do it for nonprofits to use it for a specific function, I would feel better with that, rather than just as a warehouse.
Is that your motion?
No, I want to hear what anybody else has to say, then I can make the motion.
How much is in it? How much?
Foster, can you speak to that?
Yeah, can you, because I know you flipped it, Josh.
So currently, right now, and I was in there about two weeks before the last meeting, I was in there, and there are approximately six double-door coolers, commercial coolers that are boxed up, I guess, ready to go out. And there are probably 50 or 60 boxes, about six by six, that are just full of just general items. I mean, it's just.
Well, could they not utilize all that, or utilize that space in the back for that? In that little roll-up door behind the Fireman's Museum?
I think the issue might be in keeping it secure, though. You know, if somebody else came in there, how do you secure what, you know, what you have? It would be liable for whatever's in there.
Is there a lock back there?
There is a door there now.
Well, does it lock, though? I don't know that it locks.
Well, it's just, I don't know, maybe change out a doorknob.
There are exterior doors on the back part of that. There is an exterior individual door where you can get in. There's a classroom, basically another meeting space in between that back room and the front room, but that is, there's not a door in between those two, so it's just an open space.
It's something about the old garage.
Yeah, but the old garage, there is a door between it and the regular museum.
That's correct.
It's been a while, there was a wall constructed, and with a door.
Well, I do agree that we utilize, we allow them to utilize it for productive distribution. And right now, it's just like a warehouse. If we can partner to be able to have them utilize a little bit of the back part for a time being, I think that would be great, because we still, you know, we don't want the residents to lose out on being able to get this stuff, because they do service Craven, Jones County. So if we can utilize a piece of the back of it, that would be great and still do a lease.
I think we ought to put it on the market and sell it, to be honest with you.
I know, we do that, too.
Yeah. Scott, question. So if we have multiple users, then we really should not renew the lease with them and just basically then work with them for, yeah, for a portion, if they do want a portion of it or not. And then as others come in and want the use of the building, it's a one-time kind of lease or however. We have agreements such as the gazebo and any other buildings that we have people use. Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree.
Okay, so I think, do we need to have a motion, then, if we don't want to renew the lease? We do not need to have a motion?
Just don't take action.
Don't take action, that would be what we would do? Is that what your recommendation would be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we follow up with Josh?
We'll follow.
Thank you.
This item is very similar to, when I first got on the Board 16 years ago, the McCotter House, the police department's in it, it's been vacant a good 12, 14 years. I mean, there's got to be a purpose for these buildings, or as Alderman Astor said, need to get rid of them. I think there's a purpose for both of them. I'm not sure what it is, but again, you know, leaders of the city should be able to figure out what to do with a building like the McCotter House or this. And if the Board sees a future meaning to form an ad hoc to those members here, you like.
I want to address the McCotter House, because the redevelopment commission has, you know, looked at it, would like to maybe potentially do something there, but the issue, and I don't know if we resolved that yet.
We were waiting to find out with Mark to find out about the deed restriction.
The deed restriction, and I don't know if it's resolved now.
It's resolved now.
It is resolved now, so we don't have to abide by those restrictions. So that has opened it up, and that's just a new development. So it again is in the redevelopment. I think at one point, they thought about some use of it, or would like to.
Medical clinic and stuff.
Yeah, maybe a clinic for the community.
So Scott, can we give that to the redevelopment commission?
Isn't it already in their footprint?
It's not been conveyed to them.
It's in their footprint, but we haven't conveyed it to them.
Oh, well, yeah, that would be smart to convey it.
Right.
See, leadership, you came together and got.
Conversation.
So do we need something on the agenda for, to convey that?
Yes.
Will you put that on the next agenda, then? Awesome. And we'll let, Chairman Lee, will you bring that back to the redevelopment commission that they will soon have another piece of property? All right, thank you.
Okay, let's go, Don. Item number nine.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Greater New Bern for 920 George Street. This item was also tabled from the June 8th agenda. Habitat for Humanity of Craven County has requested a renewal of the lease for a portion of the property located at 920 George Street. The proposed lease is a term for six months that will expire December 30th at a rate of $1. A memo is attached from Mr. Childs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
We're good with this, my communication with RCS, who will have the whole properties working through the deeds, and they said a six-month, if they could have a six-month lead, it would get them moving and know they've got six months to get all their paperwork done. So this, I'm okay with this. And therefore, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Greater New Bern for 920 George Street.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries item number 10.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with the State Employees' Credit Union for an ATM in the parking lot of 302 Craven Street. The lease with the State Employees' Credit Union was approved at the June 8th meeting for the ATM. However, the State Employees' Credit Union requested additional language be added to the lease, in part to specify that the city maintains the parking lot surrounding the ATM machine and to allow for a notice of a 10-day cure period for any default. This information was left out of the original lease. The lease period is for 12 months at a rate of $225 per month. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So where the ATM machine that they built up the parking lot, they want us to take responsibility of maintaining the shrubbery and stuff like that?
Which we do.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I mean, what, between June 8th and now, calls that need for the additional verbiage?
Evidently, that information was in the original verbiage, but when it got to City Hall, it was left out. It's a clerical issue.
Okay. What's the Board's plan?
Mayor, if no one has any questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with State Employee Credit Union at the ATM in the parking lot at 302 Craven Street.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries item number 11.
Next item is to consider a resolution for the donation of the structure located at 602 Gaston Boulevard to the Redevelopment Commission. The proposed resolution directs the City Clerk to post a notice of the governing board's intent to donate the structure on the city's website for five days. After that time period, the Board will then consider action at its July 13th meeting. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So that means an individual just comes and picks the building up and pay a dollar, and they own their way?
Well, they'd have to go through the process.
Okay.
This particular building, though, is going to the redevelopment commission, and they're going to move it to Eubanks?
Which one is that?
Eubanks Street.
It's three.
It's the little brick, it's the little brick house that's behind it.
Oh, in the back on Gaston Avenue.
Yes. So that, they will rehab that house and be able to use that to house people who, you know, are in need of housing.
Very good. Alderman Odom.
Scott, is there any way we could add the McCotter House language to this, so we don't have to wait another two weeks to get that on there?
That is a different process. Good question, but different step, because we're, that's real estate, this is the house that we're removing from the property, so it's personal property.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Good question.
Mayor, if we don't have any more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for the donation of the structure located at 602 Gaston Boulevard to the Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries item number 12.
Mayor, this item is to consider adopting a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 125 Hillmont Road. Hillier Thompson has submitted an offer of $7,500 to purchase the vacant half-acre lot. The tax value of the property is $15,000, and the offer represents 50% of the value. The property was acquired by the city and county in May of 2019 through tax foreclosure. The unpaid taxes at that time were $6,349.65. If the property is sold for the initial bid, the city is projected to receive $3,244.62, and the county is projected to receive $4,255.28 from the proceeds. A memo from the clerk is attached. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we do both at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we need to have Foster read out everything?
Make the motion.
All right, if no one has any questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 125 Hillmont Road and the upset bid process for 597 Highway 55 West.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderwoman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
I don't believe I have any ones tonight. No, sir, I have none tonight.
Okay. Alderwoman Harris?
I do have an appointment for the Police Civil Board, but I'm still waiting on applicants to submit.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Alderwoman Harris?
I've, okay, Margie Dunn's term on the Planning and Zoning Board will expire on June 30th, so I would like to appoint Margie Dunn to the Planning and Zoning Board to serve, and to be on reappointing her. I got a second, Pat.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do have an appointment for the Civil Service Board, and I have someone in mind, they just haven't pulled the trigger yet, that confirmed with me that they will, are interested. And I also would like to appoint Sabrina Bingle to the Eastern Carolina Council of Governance Board.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Slid that one out.
Alderman Kinsey, you're going to give me a full report prior to my first meeting.
Indeed, indeed, I would love to.
No others, thank you.
See, this is the way we work.
Yes, I have, and I'd like to reappoint Mr. Gaians to the CDAC Board.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Got any more?
That's it tonight, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Okay. This time, let's go to the attorney's report.
Nothing important, I'm here.
City manager's report.
Yes, sir, just want to give a few updates. Remind everyone, we've got the footloose on the new summer concert series this Friday, Rain or Shine, featuring Adam Pitts. Also, the annual Fourth of July celebration will be held on Sunday, July 4th. We'll open Lawson Creek Park at 5:30 PM. We'll have musical entertainment featuring the Jan Michael Field Band. Fireworks will start at 9:15 PM. And also, our July 13th meeting will be back at City Hall. Received confirmation for Public Works earlier today. They are confident that we'll be ready to go in the newly renovated space.
Yay.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
New business, starting with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor?
The only thing I have to report is, we received notification today that we have been awarded $192,000 for the mitigation of City Hall, which was, which is a great step forward for that poor building. And in addition to that, we've also have in check right, Kim, in it somewhere like almost $900,000 in check right for CAT-Z, which is reimbursement for management costs. So, we're trying to push money in as quickly as possible because of the hurricane season that's approaching. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alderwoman Harris?
Yes, so I was excited today, because I had a meeting with Public Works. We discussed a lot of things that were going on in the Pembroke community, so I'm excited because George will come on our next meeting on the 13th and kind of do a presentation of some things that they're going to try and do in the community to fix the roads and weed out some things to just start building and beautifying the community. And then the other thing is, is I know we all heard the exciting news that Juneteenth is now a national holiday, so I will be coming back with a resolution to hopefully that we can adopt it as a holiday for the city of New Bern, for our employees. So I just want to put that out there, that I will be bringing that. And that's about it.
Okay.
Oh, happy birthday to my daughter. She turned six today, and my dad, so I'm on TV, so I gotta do it. Happy birthday, Olivia, happy birthday, Dad.
June babies are best.
Alderman Bingle?
Just an update, too, I want to talk about the renovations upstairs in the courtroom. It's definitely been a process longer than we thought, but a beautiful process. I'm really pleased the way it's coming together. I do want to, again, invite everybody on July 13th, when we are back in the room, we're going to have a little dedication ceremony, and we've invited the Morgan family, and we've invited the Bingle family. The portraits are hung, and they look great. So we have Mayor Morgan, who was our first black mayor of New Bern, and we have Ella Bingle's pitch up here, who was the first woman mayor, and we've invited those families, and we're going to kind of cut the ribbon on the new courtroom.